Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the Bogota Board of Education regular meeting, May 18th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. Please stand for the flag, please. Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Bogota Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bogota Borough Hall, communicated by letter to the record filed with the Clerk of the Borough of Bogota, and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website. Eric, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Present.
Mrs. Coles?
Here.
Mrs. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Miranda?
Here.
Ms. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Ortega?
Here.
Ms. Ruckert?
Here.
Mr. Chavez?
Here.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Present.
We have the whole board?
Thank you. Also present, Mr. Kennedy, Assistant Superintendent William Supas, our attorney. Elsie is not with us this evening?
No, she's here.
Okay. Mr. Epsil, our Business Administrator and Board Secretary, and Elizabeth Morris, Assistant Board Secretary. If I may have a motion to open the floor for citizens, comments on agenda items only, please. Motion, Lisa. Thank you. Lisa, second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I would just remind everyone, please, whether you speak publicly or you put something in the chat, we need your name and address, please.
Yeah, I'm watching.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have it. I'm sorry, we can't hear anything.
Oh.
Can't.
Let's just give her one of these microphones to speak at.
Yes. Okay, me too. Okay. Connie Carpenter, 42 Hill Street. Okay, so I have several questions. The first one really is a lot of resolutions pertaining to the same thing. Resolution 5182103 through 07. The kids are going back to school for summer classes and adult activities. What schools are they going to be attending?
So, right now, all three schools are going to be, STEAM, Bixby, and the high school. So, our extended school year. And our ESL usually is done at Bixby. Any high school things we're going to be doing at the high school, then STEAM, we're going to be using this accelerated grant that will be extra help this summer that will help struggling students during this time.
Right, I saw that. Good, great, thank you. On 5182109, you mentioned a summer school coordinator. Has that person been chosen as of yet? And if so, I see the hours and so forth. At what dollar amount?
It's the BEA contracted, forty dollars an hour, as always.
So, they will follow regardless of the position? They will be following the BEA contract?
Yes.
But you haven't chosen anyone as of yet?
Uh, I don't know if we put it on here, but I think we might have. I'd have to go back and look. I think we moved them to, in June, we were going to put everyone on, so we had everyone together.
Okay. I'll take a look at that again. The supervisor of discipline? I didn't see a salary range on that either. That's 5182114.
Yeah, that ended up being negotiated with the person that gets it.
That'll be a negotiated thing. Do you have a range, more or less?
Uh, yeah, I would say somewhere between seventy and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Seventy and eighty-five? Thank you. Oh. Okay, yeah. You have Resolution 5182116 for a music teacher, as well as 2125. I'm assuming what's going to be for the elementary school and what's going to be for the high school?
Yes, we actually have three music teachers for each. One is instrumental, one is vocal, and then in the high school.
I saw the other two, but I saw the music. And I was, alright. Which is the one for the high school, by my understanding?
Mrs. Lynch.
Lynch, okay, that's the first one. Okay, great. I have notes, so let's move pretty fast. Okay. This is really a statement from 5182151, the resignation and retirement of Mrs. Cynthia Piano. I just want to state and thank her for all the years that she worked in our district. Besides being a mom here and so forth, she's been an outstanding teacher. I wish her all the luck in the world for her retirement. And I want to thank her for all the services she's done for children of Bogota. As well as 5182153 for Miss Abby Berkhoffing. I see she's leaving. I'm sorry to hear that she's leaving. And I'd just like to wish her the best of luck in her future endeavors. And I think, Mr. Kennedy, you can get rid of me. Hold that one longer. Yep, that's it to me. Thank you so much.
Uh, just one thing. We do have a lot of people that are retiring this year, so in June, we will do something formal to recognize them. But on a personal note, some people do know this, others do not, but Mrs. Piano was my fourth-grade teacher at St. Augustine School in Union City. She doesn't like to say the year, but she likes to remind me every once in a while when I pop in STEAM that she did teach me in the fourth grade.
Well, you could say that she was your mentor.
Correct, I can.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Do I see any other hands or questions in the chat? I do not.
With no other questions coming forward, we have a motion to close, and some comments, please.
Miranda.
Thank you, second?
Second, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Kathy, I have a question, if I could pose this to the lawyer regarding our chat room.
Can I?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes. Um, any discussion on, as we close? Would you like to ask?
Yes, I would. It was brought to my attention during public comments with the chat room. I know we can have a chat room. Once public comment is closed, do we have to close our chat room?
Uh, I mean, we answer questions at the end of the meeting, too.
But do we have, do we have to keep our chat room open or closed?
No, I brought that up at the state meeting.
I heard it should be closed, correct?
Pretty much.
Yes, that's what I want to know.
So that it's treated just like this?
Correct. So, do we do that?
I believe we do.
I'm not sure what's practiced this year, but I think closing it is appropriate.
Okay, I just didn't know if we did that. I didn't check last time if we did that.
I know now that because it's not the chat, it's the Q and A, only board members can see the question and not the public.
Okay, I just didn't want us to get in any kind of trouble keeping it open. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, moving on to the superintendent's report. I know.
Okay, I got a couple, a couple of things first. Just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Also want to give special thanks to Frank Palero on the IT Department for being able to do this hybrid model. We wanted to start trying to get back some normalcy, and we were able to get some board members in and some at home, and everyone would still be able, and we still have some audience members here, and we are able to stream the meeting live. So, this will probably be something that we will be doing moving forward, so everyone can partake in the meeting, regardless if you could make it to the high school or if you can just log in and watch the meeting. I did have an impediment tonight to the agenda, and that what that was is that we found three staff members that were on the tenured list were being put for tenure when they shouldn't have been. So, that's why those three were put on there to make sure it is done right. Again, even if we approved them tonight, they would not get tenure because that's law and statute. So, but we wanted to make sure it was on there for the right way. Our school calendar is also being updated to make June 18th the last day of school for all students. June 8th was originally supposed to be an off day because of the election. We're now going to make that a virtual, single-session day. By doing that, that gives us the ability to end school on June 18th. June 14th through June 18th will be single-session days with no afternoon instruction. With that being said, we're down to about 22 days of school. Of those 22 days, six days are already scheduled for virtual or single session. So, my recommendation moving forward is that we're just going to finish off the year how we are right now, and we're going to work towards September opening up to go full, in-person, all-day instruction. Governor Murphy made that announcement yesterday. That virtual instruction will not be an option. From what I've seen on these announcements, in two or three days, they sometimes get walked back after people talk about it. So, we're still waiting to see, but our goal next year is to be full-day, in-person instruction with lunch in the buildings, giving everyone the opportunity to be here all day. Our school year is coming to an end, and we are preparing for our graduations that will take place in person. We will have a sixth-grade graduation at Bixby School on June 16th, the sixth grade at STEAM on June 17th, and then at Fiblefield for the junior-senior high school students on June 18th. Again, weather permitting always at the field, but we're going to do our best to get that in. We know that, I think Ms. Alvarez told me one day when her daughter was graduating, she'd rather us be there in the rain than be in the gym. So, that seems to be the sentiment. But as long as the field is proper conditioned, we're going to do our best to be there. We are seeing some other things happen, too. The National Honor Society Ceremony is scheduled next week outdoors for the high school. Prom, senior sports, and senior academic awards will take place in person. We're trying to get all our senior awards and things of that nature in for the parents and the seniors, so they get that. Elementary schools are planning some activities for kindergarten, fifth and sixth grade, as they do at the end of the year. Fifth grade this year because they will be leaving the elementary school, which they normally don't do. So, we wanted to give them a couple of things to make up for them not being the big student in the building next year. Couple other announcements. Three years ago, we started a program that offered our students a chance to get an associate's degree from Burton Community College at the same time they were completing their high school graduation requirements. We, well, we just had our first group of students complete that. There was definitely some bumps and along the way learning the process with Burton Community College, but I'm excited tonight to announce that seven students will be graduating, not only from Bogota Junior-Senior High School, but also from Burton Community College with associate's degree. And that is a tremendous job by them. I want to publicly acknowledge them tonight, and I definitely want to celebrate them next board meeting, and we're going to invite them here if they're comfortable, or at least on the Zoom, and give them the proper celebration. But the seven students are Talab Cabana, Carmen Cruz, Vanessa de Leon, Emily Resio, Leonardo Rojas, Shabazu Dean, and Shinazu Dean. So, congratulations to them and their families for a truly remarkable accomplishment. And that ends my superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. We may move on now to the minutes for April 20th, 2021, open and closed, and April 27th, which is the regular session, open. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Lisa.
Lisa, thank you, second?
Second, Ortega.
Thank you, John. Any discussion? No? Eric, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
No, for April 20th, I wasn't here, and yes, for April 27th.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes, for the 20th, and I recuse for the 27th, I wasn't here.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Ruckert?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Moving on to education, Resolution 5182101 through 14. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Amanda.
I have a question.
One second, please, a second, please.
Second, Lisa.
Thank you. Yes, discussion.
I'm sorry, you said, you said up until 2114?
Yes, please.
Okay, no, I'm a little bit confused. On 2114, it says the approval of a new job description.
Yes, that was in your packet.
Right, right. But the last time, at the last meeting, I asked Mr. Kennedy, since Dr. Alfonso is going to be moving into the middle school, who is going to be taking or what was going to be the process or about the vice principal position? Does this have anything to do with the vice principal position?
Yes. That would be taking the place of a vice principal position.
But it doesn't say vice principal. It says supervisor of discipline and student programs.
Yes, because we're losing 100 students in the building, so we didn't feel that we need to have a vice principal in the building, and a supervisor of discipline and student programs will fill the need right now.
Oh. Everything is still covered.
I'm sorry. Sure, sure. Go, go, go. No, no, I was just going to say, but in a high school, don't, isn't it required to have a principal and a vice principal?
No, so that supervisor position would fill that position.
Mr. Kennedy, this is Miranda here. I hope you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Right, so I did have a question, and I'm going back to 2114. On 2109, as Mrs. Carpenter came up and asked, as per the BEA contract, just for the future, it would be nice for us in order, before we vote, that we have something that at least highlights, so that we know, at least I know what decision I'm making, so on, so forth. As for 5182114, you just made mention that you're saying that we might not need a vice principal because we've lost 100 kids?
No, we, yeah. At this time, I don't feel a vice principal would be necessary, that that position could be filled by someone 10 months out of the year to do the discipline.
So, so just to have an understanding, because we recently, some of us negotiated an administrator's contract that had the principal position in place and vice principal position in place. And then now we're saying we're replacing that. So, do we abolish? I would assume, instead of just leaving a position open, you know, we should probably, because if our schools are growing, as what I've heard a number of times, I've also heard that we're getting more children every day. I, you know, I don't know why wouldn't we go out for a vice principal? Primarily because they're, for the most part, better qualified, much more experienced. So, why not have that? I looked at the qualifications and the job description, which is almost everything that a vice principal would do. Why can't that position, the responsibilities be absorbed? And us going out for a vice principal with the hopes to find someone who wants to work in our district?
Um, I'm sure, Ken, if we wanted to, when I first brought this to the board originally, I didn't get too much question on it until now, so we could do whatever we want. So, we didn't hire anyone. This was just, this is just approving a job description if we go that route. If we don't go that route, then we won't need the job description.
I'm just, and again, I'm not disputing the job description itself. I'm just saying, for purposes of budgetary and things of that nature, then we need to abolish, because the recommendation is that we may not need a vice principal for quite some time. So, then we should, just to be cookie cutter and clean, we should abolish the vice principal position or simply go out, and I would personally, in my opinion, prefer to go out for a vice principal. In my opinion, again, I've looked at some of the job responsibilities of qualifications, and the one thing that I do not see is, is, and I know it's pointed out as diverse community and multicultural harmoniously, but I don't really see a either, you know, a preferred, and I could be saying this wrong, and I relate to the, I refer back to the attorney to correct me, but I don't see anything of, of, you know, it would be a plus to have someone of bilingual background because that is a vice principal of one of our larger buildings. And quite frankly, if you ask me, it represents a large, large number of our population. So, I would have liked to seen or encouraged that in our qualifications, we had something to be said about bilingual language, and obviously, whatever secondary language that represents in our school district. For me, I would say either we abolish the position of vice principal, or we really go out. And my real, you know, my real option, my primary would be, let's try to go out, get a vice principal, someone with all these qualifications, someone who's done this and better our system. That's just my opinion.
I think the idea, Frank, is with there being less students in here, it is a transition period because we only have St. Joe's for the short period of time.
Well, Ken, and I, I'm sorry, one more thing, but, see, I'm a little bit confused about this with the fact that we're going to have less students, then why do we need a supervisor of discipline?
Because there's still, there's still a lot of work that has to be done. It's not, you can't just leave it.
How can we have that without having a vice principal? What happens to, if, God forbid, something happens to the principal? I would like to have a vice principal. I asked about this last time, and you told me that the position was going to be out there, but that's not what I see.
That's what it was to be, was the supervisor of discipline. We had talked about it.
I think.
We did talk about any negotiations as well. BC, did you want to say something?
I, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm not.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
Opinion. And I think somebody coming from an educational background, that would make more sense before hiring a supervisor of discipline. I think the vice principal can do both jobs, and that's how it has been done in the past. Thank you.
Thanks, Abigail. BC?
Um, well, I have two questions, actually. So, I'll stay with 14, just for the sake of the continuity of the conversation. I guess some total for me is similar to the question Ms. Carpenter asked, as well as the commentary by Mr. Miranda and Ms. Alvarez. I guess I'm failing to see the value add in making this change. Where, what is the value in making the change? I get that there will be less children in the building. However, the workload isn't going to diminish, in my opinion, and please, I don't do what you do for a living, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't feel like the workload is going to diminish to the degree that a step away from a vice principal would be necessary unless there's a huge upside. So, if there is, please share that with us.
I think the only upside is there is saving money over the next couple of years until we figure out what the position becomes and students fill into the position. So, yes, we can hire someone right now to fill that position for 110, $120,000, or I can save $200,000 while the buildings fill up and see what it is. So, this might be a one-year position only while we transition. So, I don't know if we would have to abolish the vice principal position. It's just not filled at this moment. But it could be filled if we went into, if we got 150 kids and we're cooking, and we need to know, we need that position, then we can go out for hiring, and now the person can be rehired.
I mean, I would think, especially in light of the job market today, that the expense at recruiting, if we even had to go back and recruit again, that expense would impact whatever savings we think we're going to get from doing this. Granted, I'm sure that this position would pay less than a vice principal, but to Ms. Alvarez's point, it takes away a backup plan, should we, there's no contingency in place, should there be an issue at the principal level, for one. For two, is that delta between what we're going to pay this person and what we're already budgeted and have figured? Because we had Dr. Alfonso built into the last agreement that we just had, doesn't, you know, if that money was all, we were already going to spend that, right? So, if the up, if having a vice principal covers us with contingency, if having a vice principal is going to give us somebody with the skill set that the building clearly has needed up to this point, I'm not seeing why we would make such a change because we're going to lose 100 students, and this may be temporary. That seems like a lot of movement, and again, not a whole lot of upside. Finally, the last thing I'll say, Frank, and then I guess it's not my turn no more, but the last thing I'll say is, Frank is using the word abolish. The word I was going to use is amend, because we just, we just entered into that agreement. So, is it too far out from us just entering into that agreement to amend it to reflect the positions we're going to have if we make this change?
We could do a sidebar. Could we not?
Yeah.
We could do a sidebar to the contract. And BC, are you done? Okay, Frank?
My biggest concern is here, it's kind of on the hamster wheel. We, we've been discussing about the possibility of this new development, bringing more children. While that hasn't necessarily been the case, as far as how much they're turning over homes in Bogota, from the old school to newer generation coming into Bogota, it may be, maybe, you know, may well very happen. So, what I'm trying to say is, these buildings are not all completed yet. So, what if we get 50, 60 kids, now we're asking for a vice principal? I personally think that we should go for a vice principal. We should go out to the job market because of the climate. We, you know, I'm sure there's other towns thinking just like us, and really go out for this job. And really, you know, because, and a lot of credit to Dr. Alfonso, I mean, massive qualifications, and that was the quality of an employee that we had in the borough. And kudos to him to have gotten the promotion, the opportunity, because he maybe, you know, he deserved it. He deserved it. He got all the education. What if there's another opportunity that comes across our table? So, and I see that there's some additional discomfort, President Van Buren. So, I believe that we should take that resolution and separate it from, because I don't, if people want to have further discussion, maybe we should go through your original and remove that one for a separate vote, President Van Buren.
Well, just a question. This, this position requires a principal certificate. So, what would be the different qualifications for a vice principal as opposed to this? Is it just because you don't have the salary, and you don't have the title, it's a lesser salary? I mean, it seems the qualifications are still the same.
Right. They are, basically.
So, if the person would be qualified to be a vice principal anyway, I'm not.
It also opens the door to more opportunities. There's a bigger pool to choose from as compared to just limited, limited to a vice principal position.
So, why, why, I'm sorry, but why are we choosing at a later date? I mean, if we're going to go into that, I believe it, we should go straight to the vice principal and obviously not go through another, let's abolish whatever position we just made and then put someone else on there. Why don't we just go with the vice principal?
And while I agree with you, Mrs. Van Buren, it probably does cast a wider net. We're casting a net into a pool that we may not need to, for one. For two, we haven't even attempted it yet. I could understand if we were having this conversation because, you know, we cast our net and we got nothing. We're having this conversation ahead of the attempt. That doesn't, it doesn't feel like this is, like we're at that juncture. We haven't attempted to get a vice principal yet, and, you know, it, so do we actually need that? Do we need to go that route?
But just so everyone's clear, we've gotten over 50 applicants for the job area, all of them with the admin cert, because teachers want to become vice principals. Vice principals want to become principals. So, it's not a lack of, we have a lot of people here. What I was really trying to do is save some money over the next two or three years because we're going into this building, right? And there's a lot of costs still coming up that we're still discovering. So, we're making sure that we have money to fund everything. We just gave our administration all big bumps, right? So, if I could get through a year or two and save some money, but again, we can hire a vice principal. I have no problem with that. That is not a problem for me whatsoever. But when originally floated this idea and we talked about it, I didn't get too many people complaining. I had one or two people question me on it, but nobody saying, we should, you know, no one saying, I don't like this at all. But that's why we have the discussion now.
Mr. Kennedy, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't quite understand it until I saw it here, and that's why I was asking, because I was extremely confused. And I see what you're saying, but in the long run, wouldn't that create more of chaos and confusion if you hire someone for one or two years, and then all of a sudden, you want to get rid of that person and you want to put a vice principal? I don't know. I see it, I, we're sure, we don't want to cheat off our kids in the sense, we need. We don't want to cheat off our kids in the sense we need a vice principal's position with, along with a principal. If you want to hire a disciplinarian after that, then that's a different story. But we cannot go over and ignore that position and just not have one. I just don't agree with that.
Kathy, I'd like to say something. I think what we're doing here, I hear everyone's points and they're valid. But I think what everyone's doing, we're kind of micromanaging Mr. Kennedy's position here. He's a superintendent of the schools and he knows what positions and what job descriptions and what he's looking for. And I'm sure he's not abolishing a position just to put somebody else in a position that's not going to do the job and say just. What what we're doing here, you're supposed to take his advice, okay? He's been in the school, he's been in the position, he's been a vice principal, okay? So basically, what you're saying is you want to go out for a vice principal. He said he has fifty applicants. Let's look over these applications. Let's look at their job qualifications before we make any decisions here and say, let's not hire a vice principal. Let's see what's out there. I mean, I'm sure his recommend, I trust his recommendations. We put him in this position for a reason. Okay, he's been in this position, he's been in the school district more than any of us. Adalia, I get you work in the school district, you know, I understand that. But let's take his recommendation and let's look at the applicants before we make any decisions here.
The other thing to to consider is that all we're really voting on right now
is the position.
The position and the job description.
Right, so if that. If it's not a big deal, then why can't we just separate it from it and then we go back to it? Or we can discuss it in closed session?
No, you can definitely, listen to me, you can vote how you want on it. I, I'm, I'll have that position filled whether it's a vice principal or supervisor with a quality candidate. I'm not worried about that. So however we, however we get there and name it is 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 fine by me.
And again, Mr. Kennedy, it's not that we don't trust you, we know you know what you're doing. But we would like to know exactly how much we're going to save. Because we're not saving hundreds of thousands of dollars either.
Over four years, you will, yes.
We, well, we would like to see the numbers and if we discuss, I I honestly think that that, let's say over a number of years, since we're going to be there for what, four, four, five years? Is that the the least?
Yep.
So we're, we're thinking of not getting a vice principal until the five years is done.
No, what I'm trying to do is, right, next year, we raise taxes two percent, we have a new building. We have new staff hiring, we gave the administration a bump. So the administration vice principal was getting over a hundred thousand dollars at the time. So that's somewhere where I would have to be right now. Right? For someone that was just here. This position, ten months, I could probably get away with seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars. Because someone's going to want the experience. If they're good and we like them, when we open up the position to make it a vice principal position, they would have the ability to apply for it.
But it's seventy thousand over ten months. If we do seventy thousand over a year, then it's a different story. You're still going to, you're still going to pay them over a hundred grand over the year.
No, they only work ten months.
They only work ten months, correct?
I'm gonna, Kennedy, you made, you made very good suggestion, you know, they're going to want the experience. For a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars and and, oh wait, and let me back up a bit. I don't want to deprive our children of anything and any opportunity. I also don't want to be classified or accused of micromanaging any sort of the process. So now every time an opinion comes up, someone is micromanaging. I think that's, that's terrible to say. We're here to have opinions, we're, we definitely entrust in your process. We also have an opinion and we have a vote. And the vote is on the basis of what one individual or another may feel. Now, that being said, here we are always trying to bridge a gap. You, you keep saying, and you're absolutely right, we gave the administrators a chunk. We did. We've done, we did that because something came on the lap of new members like myself that their their requests were so high that for whatever reason, we came to amends, but because we're always trying to play catch up, we're always trying to bridge that gap. Now, with that being said, that's the same thing happens if for two years we don't have a vice principal and that salary of that individual isn't growing over the time. So now we are here two, three, four, five years later and we're asking for money because we need to play with the current market at that time, just like everything else, real estate goes up, everything goes, the demand goes up. I, and for someone to say that the only difference is the certification, with all due respect, that certification is education. The same reason, in the same agenda, we're paying someone on the basis and merit of growth, educational growth, information growth. So yes, I would love to give someone the opportunity to want to grow. But our system, believe it or not, we have children coming, our houses are flipping. Personally, I don't believe, and I'm not saying we're switching one for another, but I think that a vice principal, if we can find one, it's much more qualified than an individual looking for the opportunity. And right now, I don't think Bogota is not at its best and it's performing every day. It's getting better, you're doing an amazing job. We trust that. Simply, I don't want to deprive them. I think we should go out for a vice principal. And it seems like the consensus is somewhat general. I think we should vote on this separately.
Well, we, we can.
Yeah, that's fine.
We can vote on it separately, or you can just choose to vote as you wish on that particular resolution. You can vote yes on all and no on fourteen, if that's your choice. And the vote will be documented that way.
I also have. I would just like to say, the certification is still required even for this job. The only difference really is the title, correct?
Yeah, I mean, everyone that we're looking at has a principal certification.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly. So it's title and salary, not certification.
Again, I have no problem with this. When we, when we started this process and talked about it, we were talking about how can we cut some money for a couple of years to help, you know, some of the some of the idea now is, well, let's pay for the best, so I'm, I'm all for that. That's not it, but, you know, when this was originally talked about, we were taking a hundred kids out of the building. We were talking about how can we save some money there and 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 still provide the building what it needed.
One last question, I'm sorry. Will this new position have the same duties as a vice principal and responsibilities?
Uh, some of them, some of them not.
If if I might shift gears for a minute because I did have a question related to thirteen, unless somebody else has something else on fourteen.
Yeah, if I may chime in. I I guess I feel like I I see both sides of this and I'm leaning more towards like, I heard, I watched the meeting last week and everything and everybody was all for trying to get the fields up and running. I feel like this is an opportunity for us to save some money and help throw some money at that project. Just throwing that into the mix for thought, food for thought?
There is a budget.
So I guess what would be the difference then between, like, is there a difference in qualifications between this position or different duties that, like?
It's not, it's not totally different. The vice principal will have more responsibilities. The principal's picking up some of the vice principal's duties on this because again, seventh grade at the end of the day usually is our high high discipline number that we're dealing with, with HIBs, with problems in school, they're new to the school. And there's always problems usually beginning of the year of getting them acclimated to the building. So it was just that thought process along to start. You know, nothing's earmarked. It was just, you know, when we first started the process, how can we save some money here to put it somewhere else? But, you know, again, you know, we're, I have a budget to work with and we're trying to give our kids everything. I I still believe we can find a high-quality candidate for that position for a ten-month position, making that type of money. Again, you know, if we're still a low-paying district to administrate, so you know, even someone with experience is not coming for, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. You know, they want to come for one thirty, one forty, because that's what some districts are paying their administrators. But again, I have no problem opening this up and making it a vice principal position and seeing what else is out there because most of the people that applied for this applied for, because it's similar certs. So I don't envision a problem filling the position.
I, if if we're sort of done with fourteen, I believe BC, you had a question on thirteen?
Yeah, I just, it's a simple question, actually. So this is, this is addressing a situation that just, that will end with this school year, right? So I get that. What will happen in September? In September, will we be revisiting this discussion for that eighty-two thousand dollar?
Yes, if it's IP, if it's IP related and they have to go to that school, then we have no choice in the matter.
Okay, I just wanted to know, you know, okay, I see that for now, we're not to exceed this, but I wanted to know, is that the price tag of a full year?
All right, that is it on discussion. We do have a motion and a second on the floor for one through fourteen. If it's okay with everyone, we'll do a roll call. You can vote as you please on, on each, you know, specify. If you have any difference than the whole group of them.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Okay, I vote yes up to number thirteen. Again, I'm very confused as to number fourteen. And I am just not ready to make that decision, so I would vote no.
All to, yes to all except fourteen, no, right?
Correct, correct.
Thank you. Mrs. Cole?
Yes, on all.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, through five eighteen, twenty-one, thirteen, no through five eighteen, twenty-one, fourteen, as I've stated my reasons.
Thank you. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes, to all.
Mr. Ortega?
I would like to vote yes for five eighteen, twenty-one through thirteen and no for five eighteen, twenty-one, fourteen. I feel I need a little more information, like you said, the numbers. And I feel I'm not prepared to vote yes for that one as of yet.
Thank you. Ms. Racket?
I am in favor of everything through thirteen and I disagree with fourteen at the moment.
So the fourteen is no?
Fourteen is no.
Thank you. Mr. Chavez?
Yes, on all through thirteen, no on fourteen.
Thank you. Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes, on all.
So we have the majority in five votes to no to fourteen, so that is not passed, right, Mr. Sukas? And number one through thirteen are motion carried.
Moving on to personnel. We have five eighteen, twenty-one, fifteen through five eighteen, twenty-one, fifty-eight. Please note the update that Mr. Kennedy had sent to, do I need to do anything with that? Resolution on that list?
I think go through these, undo the addendums.
Okay. You want to include them now? All right, if we could also include it this time. Bear with me, I'm sorry. Right, the addendum, which is also personnel, which we're adding, so we're going fifteen through fifty-eight. Then also eighty-one, eighty-two and eighty-three. May I have a motion on those, please?
Motion, Lisa?
Thanks, Lisa, a second. Do you have a second? All right, discussion?
Kennedy, just for purposes of learning, a tenured teacher, is that, is this just normal that we vote on a tenured teacher considering they have the position?
Yeah, because you're approving their salary and that goes on the record of what we're approving.
Oh, thank you. I was just confused when I said tenured, what does that, but thank you very much.
It's routine. Anyone else?
Yes, I have a question related to forty-seven and forty-eight. The, will, will the votes tonight supersede discussion amongst the negotiation committee on these two topics? I'm sorry, related to forty-eight, forty-seven, I have a different question. Related to forty-eight, will the negotiation committee go over this agreement? Or will this vote be carrying that agreement?
That's, that's not negotiated through the Board of Education, so Erfin's position, the IT director and the maintenance, head of maintenance is negotiated through me and then I make the right, we got to send to the county. County signs off on it and then I make the recommendation to the board.
Okay, thank you. At forty-seven, I answered my own question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I I have a question, well, not a question. First, I want to thank Erfin and Mr. Kennedy for sending me over the previous contract. Because as it read, per previous contract and some of the merit bonus amounts, those are things that myself as a new board member had no clue what we were referring to. I didn't even know what the increase was until I requested that last night. I do want to thank you for providing that information in a timely fashion so I can make an informed decision. I also want to thank and congratulate Erfin as he's very well-versed and rounded in his position to have achieved qualitative goals. And it's interesting to see that in order to encourage growth, there is merits in place by the state, by the county. So I do applaud you for that. And I did have the same question, why wouldn't go through negotiations? But I now I appreciate that response. Again, thank you. I I just would always recommend if there's ever not, just so that we know we're voting for, I would vote for an increase, yay! And we don't know, you never know what the future holds against anyone, but I would say congrats to to Erfin and if it gets voted on and thank you to Kennedy for the information.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? On fifteen through fifty-eight, eighty-one, eighty-two and eighty-three. John?
Yes, I will, yes, I have a question from Mr. Kennedy. For fifty-one through fifty-three, I noticed that there seems to be a pattern with resignations, so I I was a little concerned. I just want to see, maybe you could shine a little light on maybe what, why was going on?
I don't know if I get into specifics about each person, but one's retiring, so they're done with working, which is congratulations to them. One is leaving because she has youngsters at home and she doesn't have to, she'd rather stay home right now and stay with them. And one is working with elderly parents, so.
Yeah, yeah, I I I didn't really want a specific, I just want a surface level. I maybe I was a little concerned that maybe it has to do with COVID or, but yeah, I understand their position.
Well, I would say two of the three, COVID definitely because of circumstances and virtual instruction and kids staying at home and teachers doing the hybrid. Definitely, I think, forced some teachers to retire a little early that would have continued working. And I think this year and a half has been trying for them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, John. BC?
Will the biology candidate that we talked about and and whose resume we received, will that person also be able to cover this person who's leaving? Like, is that one role or is that two separate biology teachers?
No, no, that, that's, those would be separate roles. Because we have, they're, they're actually certified in bio and physics, so whatever teacher we don't get next out of that position, then they will fill in there. So it gives us the ability to do, use them in both areas, both subject matters.
All right, anyone else? I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. To John Sentiman, I too, it's funny, as I read it, I saw this, but I read it, I thought, wow, is there something at large that may be causing this and primarily COVID? It's a good question, John, and I applaud you for that because part of the reason as we're looking at, you know, vice principals and so on and so forth is losing talent, right? We've always talked about how do we get more talent but losing it at the same time, so good luck with that one, right?
Well, just so, so when we post case six jobs, we get sixty people apply. It's those physics and biology teachers that are tough to find. It's easier to find a superintendent than it is a physics teacher.
All right, if am I, are we ready for a vote? Anyone else have a question? Anybody here? Roll call, please, Ervin.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Racket?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on to finance, resolutions five eighteen, twenty-one, fifty-nine through eighty.
Motion, Miranda.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Lisa?
Lisa, a second.
Chavez.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? Look. Hold on.
Uh, Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Um, yes, but I'd like to recuse myself from seventy-six and seventy-seven, please.
Sure. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yeah.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Racket?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Could you just pardon me for one second? Thank you. All right, moving on to committee reports. Does anyone have a, any committee reports? Um, I will report that I had the delegates assembly on Saturday, which was very interesting. Uh, the two resolutions, which I presented to everybody, they did pass. There was some discussions, some slight amendments. Um, there was one resolution on LGBTQ, which, uh, sensitized a little bit more towards the general population than all individuals that might be, um, abused or, or, you know, insulted, whatever, in any way. And, uh, the other one was in regard to parent advocates for special ed students, uh, so a parent could have a parent advocate, which would also include mandated training. Um, that one had some discussion as well. That one also did pass. And I do want to thank Lisa and Eileen and PC for getting back to me, um, to giving me some direction. The delegates assembly basically makes the rules that then the Board of Directors for school boards envelops into what school boards focuses attention on. So it was important that we are represented there. So thank you, ladies. Um, old business. I will just kind of harp a little bit and ask all the new board members and, and if anyone else does need training, please take your training. It's very helpful. And anybody else have anything on the old business? Nope. New business. We will have the superintendent evaluation coming up. And, um, once Mr. Kennedy does that, he'll notify us and then we'll need to go online and complete that. It's mandatory, we're too quiet, so we do need to, uh, address that. Also, there's a board self-evaluation, which we will, uh, address as well. Um, let's see, what else do I have? Oh, the positions for, um, candidates for the Board of Education. There are packets available now on the New Jersey School Board site, NJ SBA dot org. Anyone in, out there is interested in a position on the Board of Education, those packets are coming out. I believe it's a, a July twentieth or so, filing date for the November election. And June eighth, just in case anybody questions it, school will be virtual, but there is a board meeting that night. Normally, if there's, you know, something that affects the school day, we don't have a meeting, but we will have a meeting that night on the fifteenth. And the last thing, um, June eighteenth, which is the high school graduation. I will apologize, um, that I won't be able to be there to be able to represent the school. Jose, perhaps you could, as the board, I mean, Jose, if you could stand as vice president, uh, to be at that ceremony, to represent the board, I'd appreciate it. You have the.
Absolutely.
Thank you. One of my grand orgies, who also graduating from high school, so forgive me, but I'm going there.
No, no, it's okay. I'll be there.
Um, did anybody else have anything else on the new business?
I, I would like to, oh, sorry.
That's okay, John.
Oh, go ahead, Frank, go. Okay, uh, yeah, so I attended the Saddle Brook baseball game on the thirteenth. Um, and I had a few complaints from attendees of the game that the scoreboard wasn't working. Uh, just wanted to ask, um, you know, the, I know the senior game is coming up soon, uh, maybe we can get that fixed or what's going on with the scoreboard?
Yeah, I also attended that game and that was the first anyone brought to my attention, so my building and grounds guy will be on it. Hopefully, he'll be up and running it. From what I heard, it was something with the socket that day it happened, but, um, again, these things have to be reported to me to get fixed, so the coach, um, never let anyone know. Um, and when I got there, I actually asked why is the scoreboard not working? So that's why I know it was something electrical, so understood.
Thanks, John.
Okay, thank you.
Frank?
Mr. Kennedy, uh, this could fall on the new business, I guess, for, for future, if it makes it. Um, there is a lot of concern out there about people losing, uh, sixth grade graduation, considering that a notice came out, uh, and we briefed it a bit, but that people might have a pizza party for the fifth grade and they go on to the sixth. You may want to explain that to the public or notify them, or maybe a survey to see how many parents would like a sixth grade instead of moving it to the seventh grade. That's one thing. The second thing is that I would love to know more, if there's any, been any field discussion about new fields, the possibility of working with the town. Um, some few things have come up in other areas of the town that there is a possibility we can't do this or not. So I, I would love to ask you to speak to the, to the engineers or the architect, actually, the architects who hire the engineers, to see if there's a, to speak to the DEP, to see if there's Saddle Brook or something that we cannot, uh, you know, are, go through with any of our last discussion or even, or even, um, consider it, right? The discussions we've had. The other third thing is, um, I would love to follow up the, the RFPs, I believe they've gone out. What are their deadlines? Um, as I was reading to some of the state stuff, um, it looks like one or another position or some positions have a deadline of June tenth, so, uh, would that be at the very next meeting after, so that we make informed decisions? Or, you know, that's my question.
Um, for the RFPs, uh, we released them and the deadline is the May twenty-seventh. And I so far received, we have seven RFPs going on right now. I received three to seven for each of them so far, so we're waiting for the deadline. So I'm aware of that June tenth for the brokerage thing, so we will need that too. And the appointments will be in our June fifteen board meeting. All right, to clarify graduation, there will be sixth grade graduations this year at Bixby and Steen. Um, what we're looking to do is the current fifth grade, because they will not be graduating this year. So what we will be doing is, is talking to the parents and the easiest thing might be to do is just give them a sixth grade graduation like that next year. Then moving forward, the fifth grade would be the graduating class in Bixby and Steen. Um, it's, uh, a tough spot for our current fifth graders. It's a tough spot for everyone with COVID right now. Some people lost graduations last year. Some graduations are, um, are going to the Berry Centrals, but we have, um, worked at, to run our graduations in person, uh, with, uh, you know, a few family members attending. Uh, for the grades that we're supposed to graduate this year, we'll have that graduation. Fifth grade's a whole other ball of wax. Um, we're trying to give them a couple of little things, because, uh, they should be celebrating moving out of the building. Uh, but again, when the building opened up, uh, by the time everything got settled and we figured out a plan, who we were going to put in there, uh, the, the, the best plan for our, our district was putting the next year's sixth and seventh grade building. A clear space in all three buildings, which we desperately need. Um, and, uh, it gets the seventh grade out of the junior, senior high school to give them another year to mature before, uh, putting them up there. Uh, the overall utopia is to have a middle school building one day with a fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, or a sixth, seventh, eighth grade. St. Joe's does not fit that. It only fits two grade levels, uh, and that still is not, you know, is still, uh, I wish I had an extra three or four classrooms there. We're going to make due, um, but it only houses two grade levels. It doesn't make sense to put the seventh and eighth grade in, because then my elementary is nothing, uh, clears up, so, uh, that was the decision. I did have a meeting, uh, last week with those parents and I put the video out the other day to anyone that wanted to watch it. Um, so, uh, I asked the principals to put something out and write into each building about what they're doing for their students. I know PTOs are getting involved and they want to do something, stuff for their buildings, um, so that would be up to the PTOs. We did have a meeting with the town a couple of weeks ago. We were supposed to meet tomorrow, but there was a conflict, um, from the other side, so we're not going to meet tomorrow. We're setting up a schedule, uh, uh, date for the following week. We just got to find someone everyone works, but everyone's committed to meeting back again. We had our architects down there already. Some of the questions are, is what is, lies between the two, to two fields? Um, the architect said it might be wetlands. If it's wetlands, we cannot touch it. Uh, the architect is working on that now, so that's the first thing. The second thing is definitely DEP. They have to give a recommendation on what we can do. So, um, our next plan is to meet with them again next week. I have another meeting with the architects next week. They're supposedly supposed to have an answer for me on what lies between the two fields and what can be done. Because until we know what we can do, it's hard to plan, um, to do something. So, uh, I'm hoping next week we get back in there. I'm hoping an architect, we told them to move on it, so they should be moving on it very shortly.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy?
I would also recommend, if you haven't had a chance, I know a couple of you might have been, I think Eileen, you were at the meeting for, for St. Joe's. Um, the, it's on YouTube, it's very informative. It's all the nuts and bolts about what could happen and what the plans are. I would recommend it to everyone. Any other?
Oh, Mr. Kennedy, a newsletter, looks awesome. A lot of people liked it. The newsletter.
The newsletter, yes, it was, yes. It's very good. And if we can move on to hearing of the public, we have a motion, please?
Motion, Lisa?
Second Chavez.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
All right, again, please, um, state your name and address, if you're in the chat room.
Christine?
Hello, everybody. I have two, uh, quick questions. Thank you for hearing from me. The first one is, um, a while ago, we got a survey about after-school program and if we're willing to pay and what, when, what, you know, what we'd be willing to do to have our kids have an after-school program out to school. And I just haven't heard anything since. I know it's about next year, but it's still, uh, on the mind as, as parents try to figure out what to do. Bogart already announced that they're not doing after-school, so I was just wondering if that's still a possibility? That we may have a program like that?
Yes, we, we, we looked into a couple of different grants. We're also priced out if we can run it ourselves after-school, but keep costs down, so that's what we're in the process of doing now, that, what, what that survey was to give us those figures, who was willing to pay and who wasn't willing to pay. But, um, I still have to talk to the town, uh, because I know the rec department did something, but we did talk about us taking over it very soon in our building, so, uh, we're hoping that next year we will be able to accomplish that.
That's great. So the response was good enough to move that program forward?
Yes.
Awesome. That's great news. So we'll hear about that maybe sometime late spring, summer, do you think?
Uh, yeah, a hundred percent. So we're, we're just finishing up this year and then in July, we're, we're going to put everything together and make sure we get that out to families early in August, so that you will be planning.
Thank you. Awesome, thank you. That's great. Um, the other question is when, uh, what's the first day of school going to be for next year?
Uh, I just approved, hold on, we approved that last week. Um, it's going to be before, it's going to be the Friday before, uh, Labor Day, I believe.
Oh, wow! Um.
It's one of those years where, um, September starts before Labor Day, so it gives us the ability to get the teachers in the building. We figured that everyone was going to want to get their students back into the building. Um, and we get started and then have, you know, a nice half-day to start. And then, uh, because the buildings are still hot, get everyone back, I'm situated off Monday and then we're back full day, starting on Tuesday.
Is that going to be, uh, a yearly thing, consistent going forward, or is it just this one year?
It all depend, it all depends when Labor Day is in September. So sometimes, um, Septem-, uh, Labor Day falls. It only depends what September is. So sometimes Labor Day is, uh, like this year, it's late, sometimes it's early. Um, so if it's early, Labor Day is on Monday, usually that Thursday or Friday we start. But because Labor Day is late this year, uh, we're starting before Labor Day.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Carmel?
Hi, Carmel Bernie, one sixty-two East Fortley Road.
Yes.
Um, a couple of things. Now with the, the, starting before Labor Day, can you reconsider that, considering this could be, is the first summer after a full year, people are taking vacations? I personally booked that last week of, uh, August for a vacation. Um, a lot of people might be away and not be able to make that first day, you know, before Labor Day. That's never been a thing in Bogota. We've always started after Labor Day, so I would ask if that, you can reconsider that?
Um, I mean, we voted on it last week, but this year, that's what the schedule was as well. Um, but, uh, yeah, well, the other thing too is we're getting out June eighteenth this year, so we're getting out much earlier. So that was the idea behind it. Um, and we had a calendar committee with the staff, the teaching staff and administrators, and that was, was agreed upon. Um, but if you're away, you're away. We're not, we're not going to tell you not to go away.
Okay. Um, the second thing for St. Joseph's, I forgot to, didn't get to ask you the other night on the meeting. Um, I'm assuming the lease comes with the parking in front of the church for this, the staff?
Behind, behind, up top in the upper lot, we have spots.
And where would all the overflow be parking? Uh, because that's not a very big parking lot for all the teachers.
Uh, just like in the other building, where there is no parking, they park on the street.
Okay. Um, I'm concerned, because I am a resident right across the street from the school. Um, I would ask that when you're considering crossing guards, to put a crossing guard at Crestview and Fort, East Fortley Road? Because when people are dropping off their students, um, there'll probably be a lot of students, especially from the Bixby school area, walking. It can get very crazy in the mornings, um, with drop-offs. So I just want to put that out there.
I did already actually, uh, meet with the chief and we discussed this, because what is unique to this building is that anything we do will be for the first time. So pickup and drop-off. So we know how it works in the three other buildings, but, uh, we might have to tinker with it to make, we find the perfect, um, solution, but, uh, we know, we are hiring a class three officer that might require them to come outside. I did talk to the chief already about having, uh, some police car presence the first couple of days, so we can get the right field to do a safe, uh, drop-off and pick up that, those first couple of days.
Yeah, saying, what St. Joseph's used to do was to drop off and pick up down in the parking lot. Um, but now you're going to have.
Well, that's something that we, um, we're going to ask the, uh, the church about. That's something that we could do as well.
Yeah, because, but also this faculty parked down there, so there wasn't extra cars on the streets up here. There's not very much parking, um, around this area. So I just want to make sure that that's all taken into consideration.
Yeah, they, they took, well, the, the one thing they did do is take the trailer out of there. That was probably taking up five spots, so that's why we felt there was enough spots back there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're also talking fifth and sixth graders, not kindergartners.
Sixth and seventh.
Sixth and seventh graders, they're not going to be picked up, yeah.
And that's why I'm just, oh.
Sorry, no, you could say, go ahead.
No, that's why I'm concerned with the crossing at East, uh, Crestview and East Fortley Road. I live right directly at that intersection. My driveway backs out into that intersection. I see what happens when there's extra cars parked, when people are trying to cross. Fortley Road gets very busy, so that's my concern of also the students walking, why it has to be a crossing guard at that intersection in the mornings.
Yeah, again, I'm talking to the chief about that. They, they employ a crossing guard, so we're going to put it where it makes the most sense.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mrs. Cruz?
Hi, hi, Susan Cruz, one ninety-three Walnut Avenue. Good evening, board members, and good evening, Mr. Kennedy. Um, first of all, thank you so much for having our seniors' graduation in the football field. I know I'm speaking for the seniors when I say this, but they are very thankful and thrilled that it's going to be there. Um, and I understand whether permitting it, it could all change, but that's great. The BCC Early College High School Program, um, really exciting that Bogota had the opportunity to participate in this and I'm, I'm so honored. My daughter was able to be a part of it. I know there was some confusion at the end. I've been talking to Dr. Alfonso and I'll talk to him more about it. I have a couple of suggestions, but I, I can talk to him about that later on. And on the flip side, you had mentioned summer school. I just wonder if you could speak a little more on that, um, particularly what, what that looks like? Is it virtual, in-person, hybrid? Five days a week, full days, half-days? What's that, what does summer school look like this year?
So for each grade level, it's different, but it is, right now, we are trying to do it in person. Uh, we have got requests for some virtual, uh, summer school where parents are still cautious about sending their kids in. Uh, high schools. Uh, high school students are doing it for credit, so there's a certain amount of, um, hours they have to complete. In the elementary, I believe they're doing three to four hours a day. Uh, the funding we got was very specific on how we could spend the money, uh, whether it was on math, science, English, uh, wellness, uh, music. So we can only send the money for, uh, in certain classes. Uh, we asked teachers to identify students who truly struggle. We've been reaching out to them, uh, to see if they are interested in coming. It's important that, uh, if we have a spot for someone, they show up, they don't take the spot and not show up, because we can only do so many spots. So, um, all three buildings will be running something. We usually run Title I Extended School Year and ESL in Bixby. Uh, with this Learning Accelerated Grant, we have two grade, uh, teachers per grade level. We're looking to do a couple of different things with that. And.
Would eighth grade fall, fall under your high school?
Yes, so what we, what we're even doing now is we're hiring, we're advertising everywhere, because, uh, some of our teachers didn't want to teach, uh, this summer because of the pandemic. So we're, we're making sure we have a middle school math teacher, a, uh, middle school English teacher, bio-algebra. ESL, we have to find. So we're advertising to make sure all summer school classes have a teacher, if any kids want to come.
Okay, and just, and just, just to clarify again, it's June 30th to July 29th, five days a week, full days?
Not full days, uh, I think they're eight to one, but again, great, certain grade levels, uh, only require two or three hours a day, because it's state mandated to get credit recovery.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Question?
Okay, I got a couple of questions in the chat. Yep, so, Natalia Dimitris, 43 Pine Street. Where are uniformed contracts reviewed? And have you ever considered shopping for other vendors, maybe less expensive? Uh, yeah, that's something that I guess we can look at. I don't think we approved any uniform vendors that happen.
If you're a uniform company directly.
Okay, so. Yeah.
They're using, whether we're, we saw it, uh, negotiate it. I'm, we're not being all that, that much, but we can look into it.
We can look into it, definitely. Uh, as Mr. Epsil just said, that, uh, these are just places that offer the uniforms. But we could see if we could find a few more that are helpful. I see, I always forgot Christine with the question gave the address. All right, I got, uh, Kristen Meenberg. Kristen Meenberg? She disappeared. A Pico Cabrera. I got, I have to promote you to a panelist, so you're going to be seen by everybody, just so you're aware. I think you can, uh, hide your, you can stop the video if you choose.
Good evening. Just unmute.
Unmute. No, unmute, sorry. No, I just wanted to, um, to say that I'm happy to see everybody back in the, uh, in the cafeteria. And, uh, it's definitely a step forward, uh, with getting everybody back into the building. That's all.
Thank you.
So I gotta see how I. Okay, and then Antoinette Ramirez?
Hi, good evening, Antoinette Ramirez, 98 Queen Anne Road. Mr. Kennedy, just, not, not that I, believe me, want to bring this up again, but just because there was such a lengthy discussion about this whole vice principal and, uh, you know, head of discipline, whatever it is, would you be able to just give a, a little bit of information of what the main difference is? Because I, I always understood that a, a big part, not everything, of course, I know there's a lot involved. But a big part of being a vice principal is handling discipline. And when I say discipline, I don't just mean kids, you know, bullying and hip and whatnot. But, you know, um, you know, really getting to know the kids. So I, I'm trying to understand the difference, because, uh, when I first read the agenda, I didn't see a big deal at first. I mean, yes, Dr. Alfonso, Alfonso was exceptional. And, you, you know, I just think if we get the right person, you know, title to me, that, again, we can agree to disagree. You know, the board, I just want you to understand that, it's very respectful what I'm saying, that, you know, a, as long as the person is still fulfilling most of the duties and Mrs. De Congilio, who I also think is absolutely wonderful, is okay with, you know, taking on other things. Wh- what are we really missing if we take on this new position as opposed to calling it a vice principal?
I guess just the, uh, the idea of, uh, your, you, once you get into your vice principal, you can go for your administration cert to be fully certified. But besides that, um, it would be very similar, in my opinion.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand, because I knew you did that position and then moved to principal and then superintendent. And so, like, so I was trying to understand, because I was kind of caught off-guard with such a, it was a lengthy discussion and I was really trying to understand what the difference is. Of course, having a child in the high school and then someone else, another child is going to be coming up. But, so it is, it is very similar. It's just really a, a majority of it is a title.
Uh, yes, but I think the, the idea of a vice principal, you, you might have different people apply for it, because it will help them get their administration cert. So my initial thinking was, there's no discipline in the summer for the most part. So if I made only 10 months, uh, and save some money, um, that we can use that money elsewhere. But if, um, you know, to me, the, the person we were going to hire most likely was going to have an administration cert, um, that was working towards it as well.
Okay, because I, I mean, I, I'm kind of with you on that, you know, that there's so many things we, we want for our, our children and of course, we always want the best. And, you know, as parents, we're willing to pay for that. But, I mean, if you already have applications, though, um, I, I think as a parent, I'd love to see the board look at those applications first before just saying you don't want it. Obviously, whatever you guys, you know, choose, that's why you're on there and, and I respect it. But, but is it possible to consider looking through the applications before saying no to just, you know, a, a, a discipline, you know, director of discipline or whatever it is, to maybe just consider it? And then, of course, if you don't like it, then of course you, you move forward with the other side. Didn't you, you know, you have a little bit of time? Just, just my thoughts, like I said, I didn't want to, like, rehash it, but just my thoughts, thank you for listening.
Yeah, again, I think, um, it's, the, the same type of, the same counties are going to apply for either position, I believe. And it'd actually be a good test now, when I put out the vice principal job tomorrow, to see if the same people apply. So we'll, we'll know exactly what's what.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm lowering. Mrs. Cruz?
Hi, yeah, hi, Susan Cruz again, sorry. I just, I wanted to mention one other thing, I just remembered. So I've been working with the senior photos from, they were sent to me because I'm working on a project that Kenny, you know about. And they are horrible. These photographs, these portraits are so bad. I just, before we forget, and a whole year goes by, and we're looking at doing senior portraits again, maybe consider hiring a different company rather than Prestige? I just feel like, I, I mean, I went in, because I'm putting these on something, I'm sort of creating my own work with them. I've gone in and I've had to touch every single photograph, just to get rid of a blue tint that's across every image, shadows, hair in their eyes. I just, I just wish, and, and BC, don't get upset with people, I'm going to throw out, Tilo Moses, who did about, I don't know, a handful of senior portraits, and they are gorgeous. I just think we should consider possibly looking into Moses doing all the senior portraits or hiring somebody else, or just something. I, I just feel like we can do better than Prestige, because they're really, really horrible. And that's it, so just, just make a note of that, I hope, thanks.
Okay, just to be, uh, I'm pretty sure, because, uh, this is on the board, that we would not be allowed to hire him.
Oh.
That would be, that would be, uh, ethics 101. But, uh, if the people have complaints, I could talk to Ms. De Congilio, that's something that usually is not, uh, something I'm paying attention to, is senior portraits unless, uh, someone brings it up at a board meeting. So I don't know if you, if, uh, Ms. De Congilio has gotten more complaints, but I'll definitely bring it to her attention, uh, and see, uh, what else can be done. And she can ask around to other districts who they're using.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Sign me out there.
You have to come in the microphone again.
I shouldn't have to do with anybody else. Were you finished?
I didn't lower her hand.
I'm a carpenter, 42 Hill Street. I just wanted to say that I attended the, um, school play on Friday. It was a shame there was barely anybody there, if there was, we have 12, 15 people there, um, including myself. But it was well-done, it was very cute, it was very nice to see, go back out there and see a nice program. Bogota high school students are awesome and they are so talented. So, um, I just wanted to congratulate them, to let you know that I, I did attend and it was a nice evening. It was quick also, it was like an hour and 15 minutes, an hour and a half. So as well, uh, well done. Congratulations, please, Mrs. Reno, as well as Mr. McCann and all this cast and, and the stage crew, please. I'm going to go and ask you a couple of questions with regards to this whole VP and so forth. I, I, I agree with you, Mr. Kennedy, I think that's the smartest thing to do. How many students are currently in Bogota High School?
525, 530.
Okay, so that means we'll be, we'll be having about 425, I think 100 is a low number. I think we're going to have like.
It's right about 100, I think, the current, um, sixth grade class. Yes.
Okay, so, um, so we'll have 400 students, uh, for the, the principal as well as this quote-unquote, supervisor or the discipline, uh, officer, correct?
Yes.
400 students.
Well, 420, you know.
Yeah, well, manager, okay. Did Mr. Alfonso's salary already change when he became the principal of the new, of the temporary new school?
It moved over to the new position.
He, he got a new salary?
Well, it was his negotiate salary for next year.
Okay, so he's with the principals, in other words. So here's my question then, um, if and when we lose, because we are going to lose St. Joseph's at one point, what would happen if we have, to be key now, we have, we're going to have a lot of administrators. What would happen, let's just say, you do go up on STEAM or up on Bixby? I know that was, uh, uh, an idea at one point. And we lose, now what would happen if we have, let's just say, this new person as VP, Mr. Alfonso loses, now St. Joseph's. We have the principals of those elementary schools, what would happen at that time to that administrator or counterpart of Mr. Alfonso?
It, well, it would be tenured, right? So every, like, for example, I'm the most tenured administrator in the district, so, um, but it goes down the line for your hire date and where you are. So, uh, I imagine if we're able to ever have a true utopia with a true middle school, uh, vice principal will be needed, principals will be needed. It's hard to predict three years from now with administrators, but five years from now, I, 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 I think it would be tough for me to give you an answer. But, look, if we had all of our administrators here in five years, then we would be doing very good. So, um, but we're in the business where people want to become superintendents, people want to become principals, people want to become bigger principals in bigger schools. So, uh, you know, it's not often that someone starts a career and stays, um, for somewhere forever. So, uh, I, I, I wouldn't even, there will be positions needed, because the space and the students will need the position, but. Yeah, we, you know, we, we have the temple now as well, we're going, we're finishing up all the, uh, the Department of Education, the DEP, so we're going to have building space, so.
Right.
We might need another administrator if, if things are going.
I was actually going to ask that question, what are we doing with the temple, are you also?
So here's the deal, so, in, in my opinion, we're, we're still waiting for the DOE and we're still waiting for the Department, uh, DEP, um, to give us clear rates, to, to finalize the sale. If we have to go out for a referendum to build on to a school, um, I wouldn't want to do anything in that building until that referendum passes, because then we know that we'll have classroom space. If, if a referendum never passed, then that would have to become more classroom space. So it kind of, we'd be stuck waiting to see where we are. But, um, we're, we're working on plans to, to bring that to the public. So COVID has slowed everything down right now. So, you know, we're hoping to, to move on that, uh, within the next, you know, six to eight months, that, to get some answers of where, what direction we're going. So St. Joseph's was great for the next couple of years, but it's not the be-all and-all. It just gave us some, it's, it's not putting trailers in our school in the next two years. And that's what we don't try, which we don't want to do, so.
Right, right.
But we still need more space. So maybe St. Joseph's becomes available and we can buy it, then we can really do some different things in there. Because, you know, we don't want to put too much money into a building, that's not going to be ours.
Right, makes sense. And I, and I, and for that reason, all those what-ifs kind of stuff, I think the factor of, especially since the supervisor of, of, of discipline and the VP has the exact same, uh, needs and the criterias to become either the supervisor or the VP, then saving some monies in the interim, I think is the most financially stupid that we can do. And I, I really do think that that's something that really needs to remain, uh, until we know, we have some more stuff that's more stable, that we know for a fact that the DEP or the DOE is going to come in and let us know what we can and cannot do. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else?
Anything else in chat? Not too new, or Nathan Touch, and no hands up.
With no one coming forward, may I have a motion to close, couple of citizens comments, please?
Motion, Lisa?
Second amendment.
Thanks, Miss. Any discussion? All in favor?
I would like to say something, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Ken Frank, have we just finished citizens comments, please?
Oh, okay, sorry.
I have all in favor, no, I have all in favor, I need a pause. All right, thank you, go ahead, Frank.
Sorry, had frozen in the process. I do want to, for the public and, and some of the questions that came up, Kennedy, you said very clearly that the prin, that the position of supervisor of behavioral would not necessarily mean that they take on exactly the same role as the vice president. Furthermore, it was stated that, uh, the principal would have to take on more tasks. Speaking from a resident, although you really can step in or out of that, we're constantly working towards trying to get our high school to perform better. I think that's the goal that this entire community has. How do we improve? And to even fathom the thought that we're going to give the pre, the principal of the high school more work than, and more goals to try to achieve that, um, it's not necessarily the right thing, you know? If, if I would have heard that, it's a complete wash, but I didn't hear that. What I heard clearly was that, uh, more duties will be absorbed by the principal, who we currently are entrusting to even, to bring our schools to perform, our high school, at better. Because clearly, we know where we stand by each school. So that's all I would like to say, we know that the high school is something that we're all, you know, just hurrah, pushing, pushing, pushing. And I know that's your biggest task at this moment, I hear you. So I was hoping to give you a better tool, um, somehow to try to, you know, to make sure that we don't overburden a principal that has a, a, a task at large. Another thing, Kennedy, um, I did want to bring up, I've. Another thing, Kennedy, um, I did wanna bring up, I've heard it in the past, I've heard it recently. Uh, and, and I just heard it again, and I, and I, and I feel bad that I've forgotten, for those who are listening. Uh, maybe we should reconsider this whole uniform process. Maybe we should go out, and I don't know if we can or we can't, but purchase, um, um, logos a- and we sell them to the town or, or of some sort, and, and we come up with a uniform structure. I personally think that there's some, when you hear some of the kids, for many years, there's some sort of segregation between, oh, I'm from STEAM and you're from Bixby and I'm from a better side of town and you're, maybe we should come up with a two uniform structure. Whereas, you know, elementary, all schools in elementary, this is what you wear, and we provide those, um, you know, one-time logos and have them iron them on, or maybe, a- and then maybe come up with a middle school and a high school, or just anything elementary through middle school and a high school. I, I would love to, to see our town come together, as I've seen over the last few years, than to say, I'm from this side of town and you're from that side of town. Uh, because quite frankly, if we look at the blue ribbon qualifications and we look at certain stuff, there is, um, some understanding about who comes from apartment dwelling, who owns a home, you know, where the residents are from in town. So it would be a very unique move, um, and something very, uh, inclusive and diversified and all together as one town to see maybe all of our elementaries come together as one uniform and, and maybe-
If I may comment on that, I think one of our goals, or one of our future goals, is to have, like, the Bixby School be, um, grades like three through six and the STEAM School be grades, you know, K, K through four or K through five. That would alleviate some of what you're saying. So maybe we should, maybe we should, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I totally, I was, I, I understood. And when my daughter went from the Bixby School to the high school and then the STEAM School kids, there was definite some rivalry going on there. So, you know, I appreciate what you're saying about that. But I think, I think our long-term goal is to do that to the schools. So maybe changing the logo might not be in our best interest at the moment.
Well, as my, I appreciate, thank you, Amanda. I'm glad you, you, you understand that. I, I think that that, such a small town to have such big rivalry is insane. But, uh, secondary to that is, uh, maybe just hire a company that provides an unlimited amount of logos when are they necessary? And the parents, you know, because of the uniform structure, I'm, I'd maybe some way to save some money at home. Um, I see a lot of complaints on Facebook pages, walk into the streets about the uniforms, how they're being dropped off, uh, the, the astonishing delivery fees when they throw them in front of your door, whatever that may be. Um, I, I personally have seen no trouble with it per se, but I will say that we're here to serve the community that put us here. Um, so it's just a point of, 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 uh, pointing it out in the board as they've requested.
Guys, just to add something very quickly, or maybe even, um, I'm part of the PTO on the high school, and maybe we can delegate that to the high school, to the PTOs. Maybe they can help themselves generate some money to, to help the, the, the teacher appreciation and stuff. You know, we are, as a PTO member, we're, we are suffering because of what happened, just like everyone else. Um, it's very hard to fundraise. Uh, something like that would be a, a, a great line of, of, of help for, for all the PTOs. And I think I'm talking, you know, with every, with every school.
Yeah, we could definitely look into the uniform process. Um, I know it comes up every once in a while. Um, I know for some people, it might be convenient to get a logo and iron it on. For others, it might not be. So, you know, we, maybe we can provide different options. Uh, the uniforms were always picked because of the school colors, which they're different. But when they got to the high school, that's why seventh and eighth grade always wore gold because they were coming together for the first time. So that's why those were always identified as gold. But, uh, we could definitely put a, a group together and ask if any parents wanna get involved and, and over the summer, try to work something out. Uh, it's just hard to turn on a dime with uniforms because, you know, you have 500 people that might have them. And they're not looking to go out and buy something new at this point in time. But, uh, it's definitely something to have a conversation on and see what else can be, um, done to help everyone.
Thank you. All right, we have no need for executive session this evening. So if there's nothing else, I may have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion, Amanda. Second call.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All righty, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone. Night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Good night.